Oh my, oh good.
Warner isn't back. And we're missing Pat.
By the way, that clock is a little late, I think.
It is, it is, it's eighteen thirty right now. I'd like to bring the North Hampton County February one meeting to order. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance led by Tara Zarinsky.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Zambro, can you call the roll?
Mr. Kuzik.
Present.
Mr. Deetz.
Here.
Mrs. Ferraro. Kay.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Kraft.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Ms. Fargo Hefner, here.
That was not me.
Did you hear me say here after that? Was that, okay.
And Mr. Zarinsky.
Here.
All present, Mrs. Ferraro by phone.
And her dog.
And her dog, yes. I need a, I need a motion to approve the minutes to January eighteenth.
Motion to approve by acclamation, Mr. President.
And Mr. Deetz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I had a correction on that one. There was a one-word correction. Can I deal with, and I don't have it in front of me. There was one word I had to add. Do you have the minutes? Never mind. Let it go. Withdrawn.
So it was approved and seconded, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next thing I have on the agenda is Arts Quest. Ms. Casey Hilgert, if you'd like to come up and give your presentation, please.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for this opportunity to present in front of council. Appreciate all the new members and some of our friends, and certainly new county executive. Uh, we wanted to tell you a little bit about what we have done since the last time we spoke with you. So for the new members of council, before we get to what we're discussing, um, which is the hotel tax grant we received for our Chris Kindlemart expansion two years ago, we wanted to give you a little update on where Arts Quest is today. So for those of you who may not be familiar with us, Arts Quest obviously is a Bethlehem-based nonprofit. We're serving about two million people today, uh, from about forty-five states and six countries. We are the ninth-largest arts and culture organization in Pennsylvania, the largest outside of Philadelphia and Pittsburgh. We have an annual operating budget today of about twenty-two million dollars. Uh, our mission is to provide arts and cultural programming, uh, to increase access to the arts, but what I think makes us a little unique is that we use that arts and cultural programming for urban revitalization. So if you see other organizations, and I'll point specifically to for-profit festivals you may have heard about, like Firefly or Lollapalooza, what they tend to do is go out into large fields, set up fences, charge a little more than we do for the main stage acts for the weekend, and then roll up those dol- those dollars and head home. We like to have those dollars reinvested in the community, which is why all of our programming is throughout, uh, Bethlehem. Uh, in two thousand seventeen, we just did the calculation through the Americans for the Arts, which is a standard industry for determining annual economic impact. We're at about a hundred and forty-five million dollars a year through all of our programming. And this will be our thirty-fifth year of providing, uh, arts and cultural programming and our thirty-fifth edition of Music Fest. Today, um, you know, people think of us as Music Fest and Chris Kindlemart and a lot of the festivals, but what we also like to talk about is, is being a job creator. One of the things we wanted to do with Steel Stacks was to create a pipeline of opportunities for artists, and that means you have to give them, uh, the opportunity to make a living wage. So today, we, uh, hire about twelve-hundred visual and performing artists a year and educators. About fifty percent of those are local, so that is not just all the folks we're bringing in from the outside. Uh, even when that programming is free, uh, and we, and we hear this a lot, it's a free performance at Music Fest, so the tents must be free, the stage must be free, the artist must be free. We actually pay each one of those artists because we can't be an arts and cultural organization if we are not the ones providing a, uh, living wage for those artists to be able to perform. We're doing about three thousand concerts, classes, and camps a year. Uh, just about forty percent of that is free to the public, and a big part of our mission is to create partnerships. So we are working with two hundred and ten corporate partners, uh, just under a hundred nonprofit partners, uh, throughout the year. And we are a community-based organization, so that means we reflect what the community needs. Uh, and we are fortunate to have that support with about eighteen hundred volunteers. We call them the Arts Quest Army, uh, about twenty-eight hundred members, and we are currently serving about thirty thousand youth, um, throughout the reason with our programming. So the reason why we're here to talk to you tonight is just as a reminder, and I think this will come up in a minute, but back in May two thousand eight, North Hampton County had committed about a, a million dollars in hotel tax that was supposed to be paid out over the next ten years in support of the Steel Stacks project. And fortunately, in September of two thousand sixteen, uh, I think we've had some great impact from that programming. We were able to get to that million dollars early. And that's when we came in front of county council and asked, I think it was about September, and asked if you could extend that, which is about fifty thousand dollars from September to December. Our idea was to take, if you were to continue, uh, paying out those funds as you normally would, we wanted to use those funds to do something a little different with Chris Kindlemart because we had a little hunch with that. So we were fortunate, and we thank you all for that investment, uh, and we were able to receive that in, and in October two thousand sixteen, we made some plans for Chris Kindlemart, which I'm going to get into in a minute. But I just want to spend a minute to talk about our economic impact. The Steel Stacks campus, the year that we opened, had an economic impact of a little over twenty-seven million, and in finishing up in two thousand seventeen, we're just under sixty million. Music Fest, the reason why we used two thousand ten instead of two thousand eleven as that year for economic impact is that's the last year we had all of Music Fest on the north side only. So you see that economic impact going from thirty-nine million to this past year with our record attendance of just about seventy-three million dollars. And I'll tell you, with record attendance comes record expense, but that's a story for another time. Uh, Chris Kindlemart, uh, came in at about five-point-seven million dollars. We'll show you that increase. And the Banana Factory year-round programming is a little under four-point-five, and that's how we get to our one, uh, a hundred and forty-five million dollar annual economic impact, which, uh, is just a little under a six percent increase over two thousand sixteen. But getting back to what we talked about here with the hotel grant, I'm going to get forward to Chris Kindlemart two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen, when that catches up with us in just a minute. Here we go. So two thousand fifteen, pre-hotel tax investment, for those of you who have not been down there, we have basically two tents, about a hundred and thirty-five vendors, crafters, and retailers, and we were topping out attendance of about sixty-four thousand. We think there's a huge opportunity with Chris Kindlemart. Music Fest is obviously ten days, uh, but Chris Kindlemart is five or six weekends. It's an entire season. It is branded with the city, which is the Christmas city, so everybody is on the same platform here, and we talk about bringing visitors in. For us, at Music Fest, you get one Monday, one Tuesday, one Wednesday, and one Thursday. For Chris Kindlemart, depending on how the calendar falls, we can have five or six weekends, which gives us five Fridays, five Saturdays, plus you just have to go out during the holiday season, so it doesn't really depend on the weather like Music Fest does. So we also have this urgency and this scarcity to get out. So what the dollars allowed us to do, uh, in two thousand sixteen was to double the tents and essentially double the footprints. So we went from two tents to four tents, increased from a hundred and thirty-five vendors, crafters, and retailers to a hundred and sixty, and we saw about a seventy, uh, seven-point-five percent increase in that. Uh, also a slight uptick in the performances there, but we did see a, uh, increase of about three hundred thousand dollars in economic impact. What I think happened in two thousand sixteen was word spread that the footprint doubled. We certainly saw that in crafter applications, and we saw that in interest. And that bears out when we look at what happened in two thousand seventeen. On the left-hand side is two thousand sixteen, it was on the previous slide, same numbers, but I point your attention to the right-hand side in two thousand seventeen. We had a hundred and seventy-five, uh, vendors, crafters, and retailers, and we had almost a thirty percent increase in attendance. That's pretty remarkable when you look at any festival or event or brand that's been around for twenty-five years. You expect a three, four, six percent increase year over year, depending, but to really see that kind of an increase for us, um, was a dramatic, um, success. And we think we've only scratched the surface there. This does not encompass what we can do down at Steel Stacks because we don't do robust programming as of now. It's all contained in those four tents, and we're certainly hearing demands to be able to expand that. What we saw then was certainly the economic impact jump from the four-point-five to the five-point-seven million dollars. So we are hard at work now, and, and so you all know that investment happened in two thousand sixteen. What that allows us to do when that happens, and we can have that jump in attendance, then we absorb the cost the following year. We know to how, how to offset that with additional revenue opportunities. So we kept the footprint the same, although the investment from, uh, the county went away as it should have because it was a one-time thing. So we are looking now what we can do to expand that footprint, uh, in the years to come. Unfortunately, with how the ca- the calendar falls next year, we will once again have six weekends. What we do besides just the footprint and getting people down there is market, obviously the city of Bethlehem, and certainly North Hampton County by that extension. Uh, we had our twenty-fifth, uh, anniversary this past weekend, but this gives you a sense of the rankings that we have, uh, achieved, both for the city of Bethlehem and for Arts Quest, uh, having twice been rated one of the top five holiday markets in the world by Travel and Leisure Magazine. Uh, we had some features outside of Chris Kindlemart. I'll tell you, another very popular event is Peeps Fest, which was picked up by CBS this morning, this past year, and, uh, we, we received actually about one-point-two-billion media impressions from Peeps Fest alone, just for those two, two days. So lesson learned there. Drop a very large, uh, Peeps chick on December thirty-first, and you will get a lot of media release. But you will see from Inc. Magazine to NBC Philadelphia, uh, to Bloomberg News to Conde Nast, this is what we're trying to achieve, a lot of this programming. So, uh, we wanted to thank you for that investment and come back and, and, and report to you on what we were able to do with that and what we're planning to do going forward with expanding that. Now, just recently, we were fortunate, uh, to receive a hotel tax award for what is called the Red Ball Project, and I just want to key this up for you so you are ready to see what this is because it's fairly dramatic. Uh, and it will be contained within the South Side Arts and Music Festival. This is a festival we really geared up last year. It is meant to get people around the South Side Arts District, much like what we did with Music Fest in the north side. We want to do the same with the south side, but how we're going to differentiate what we do here is lead with visual arts. We will use performing arts as supporting, and we will use venues around the south side to get people to walk around there. So in two thousand sixteen, it is a two-day festival, Friday and Saturday. Uh, we had our first mural installation on the south side, which you see here. That was by a group of artists called Dripped on the Road. They are artists that travel the country, uh, in an RV, and they do murals all across the country. By sheer luck, uh, the folks from Dripped on the Road are also Lehigh University alum. So it was nice to be able to bring them back and to have them showcase their, their abilities here. Since doing Dripped on the Road, three other murals have popped up around the South Side Arts District, which is what we wanted from a grassroots, organic standpoint, is to demonstrate what can happen with public art and then let, let other businesses and organizations go with that. Uh, we had performing arts. We had thirty performers at the National Museum of Industrial History, Touchstone, Holy Infancy, Godfrey Daniels, and then we had a headliner at night. So we didn't do any programming at the Arts Quest Center in the day to purposely push everyone out and then bring them back into the building at night. Following, uh, two thousand seventeen, we also did a public bike works project with the city of Bethlehem, which helped to incorporate local artists. Uh, we installed about four of these, uh, all around the city, uh, and that was a great way just to get some local folks involved. Just waiting for the technology to catch up with us. And I can skip past that because I'm just too excited to talk about what is coming up. So for two thousand eighteen, we are going to double the number of venues where we have performing artists. We are going to have ticketed venues at the, at NMIH, the Charter School, Godfrey Daniels, Banana Factory, Arts Quest, but then we're going to have five free venues in partnership with Lehigh Valley Underground. Again, this is a big deal for us when we talk about partnerships. To break, to be able to bring in diversity from other organizations is important to us. If we're doing all the programming, at some point, people will be fatigued by that, so we're very excited about Lehigh Valley Underground. For our visual arts, we're still looking for that location, for the mural installation, but what you see in this photo here is a sculpture called Split Infinity by a sculptor out in Pittsburgh called Jim West, and that is a sculpture of Einstein. It's about twenty-two feet tall, and you can see why it is called Split Infinity. It will be installed in the first floor of the Arts Quest Center, uh, beginning in April. And to kick this off, and we have an entire curriculum that we are doing with the Bethlehem Area School District and others to be able to bring them in, hear from Jim, and talk about Split Infinity and the ideas of Einstein and how you incorporate the arts into that. So we're, we're very excited about that, but then the, uh, key part of this festival will be dramatic pause for technology to catch up with us. The Red Ball Project. Uh, this is the longest-running visual art installation worldwide.
Wow.
Much like the Peeps chick, it is just a very large inflatable red ball that is installed in five different locations around the city and the county, and it is meant to showcase your city, to go experience your city, and see your city through different eyes. It's meant to be very interactive, so when you see the locations here, it's been in Paris, in Barcelona, uh, in Bordeaux, Abu Dhabi, and to be able to bring that and put Bethlehem in that list is a dramatic, uh, opportunity for us sort of. So for the county to offer that risk capital, we are putting in more than the other half of that cost to help put this in place. Uh, this group comes with a significant PR push, and they are very sophisticated in reaching out to national media. They have a long history in working with national media, so to be able to work with them as we lead up to this and get the community involved in where these locations should be, the photo opportunities, the social media that day, we think getting out ahead of that and being able to push that will drive interest to the South Side Arts and Music Festival and certainly into coming into Bethlehem for the weekend and staying there. So that is what we're looking forward to. Stay in, uh, stay, stay tuned for some more details on that, and that's essentially our presentation. We wanted, just to recap, and, uh, thank you all for the North Hampton County Hotel Tax Funding for both Steel Stacks, as well as what we were able to do with Chris Kindlemart and to see that growth. And then we're very excited to see about what happens with the South Side Arts and Music Festival, and be sure to come back next de- uh, next year and, and tell you how that all went. Of course, I'm sure if you get on social media, you'll be able to see the impact of that. And as always, we thank you for all your support and what you've done for us.
Thank you, Cassie.
So thank you so much for letting us be here.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Over?
No, I, if I may, Mr., uh, first of all, I want to thank you for your, and I respect you for your, uh, aggressiveness and your creativity and your, your, uh, ability to bring programs to this, this county, but I also wanted to add, I know you're busing kids from Nickman over to the Banana Factory for the arts programs that you're working with, and I find that highly, uh, that's so great that you're able to do that, and I just wanted to commend you on that. I heard about it yesterday.
Thank you.
Started, just fairly new.
It is new, it's expensive, but if your mission is to increase access to the arts, you have to remove the barriers to create that access. So if that's what it takes, thank you.
Anyone else?
I just, uh, want to thank you again for the program that you do in the, your community. You guys do very well with the money. You know, quite often, you know, I take my kids down there in the summertime with either the weekend free concerts to, they can run around outside and not be, you know, they feel the need to sit in seats or wait around and between the, the World Cup soccer games and that. And then also, at one point, I, I was a coffee shop owner on Main Street in Bethlehem and really benefited from the, uh, you know, Music Fest and other activities that drew people out there. Without those events that went on, you know, our coffee shop wouldn't have made it that we had there, so.
I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity.
Look forward to seeing you again.
Absolutely.
Next thing on the agenda I have is courtesy of the floor. I have, uh, five people who signed in. I'll just start at the top of the list. Uh, first person I have is Mr. Peter Mulan from Easton City Council.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Mr. McClure, members of the administration, uh, President Kraft, distinguished members of county council, and Mrs. Zambro. My name is Peter Mulan, and I am a councilperson in the city of Easton. I serve as the Chair of Public Safety, responsible for the police and fire departments, and I'm here to present information on what I believe is a vital asset to our law enforcement agencies in North Hampton County. I was recently invited to attend a presentation by District Attorney James Martin in Lehigh County to showcase the Regional Intelligence and Investigation Center, otherwise known as RIC. Other attendees at the presentation on Thursday, January twenty-fifth included North Hampton County Executive, Mr. McClure, Acting Sheriff Richard Johnson, First Assistant District Attorney Terry Houck, Bethlehem Mayor Bob Donches, and Police Chief Mark Delusio, Nazareth Police Commissioner Randy Miller, Plumber Police Chief, Chief Larry Palmer, Easton Police Chief Carl Scialzo, Eastern City Administrator Louis Campos, and Allentown City Councilperson Roger McLean, who was the former Police Chief of Allentown. The Lehigh County Regional Intelligence and Investigation Center provides investigative and analytic support services to its varied law enforcement partners throughout Lehigh County. It is governed by the Lehigh County District Attorney and located in downtown Allentown. The center employs three criminal intelligence analysts, two county detectives, part-time administrative support staff, and a center director to provide support services to the county's local, state, and federal law enforcement agencies. The RIC's state-of-the-art information technology system allows investigators from the center and local police agencies to search and analyze crime data at a county-wide level. The primary data is derived from local police and prison records within the sixteen Lehigh County Police jurisdictions, Pennsylvania State Police, the District Attorney's Office, and the Lehigh County Jail. Additional local, state, federal, and national data sources are also integrated into the center systems. In two thousand sixteen, the North Hampton County Sheriff's Department, with full backing of the North Hampton County Chiefs of Police Association, received a grant from the County Gaming Authority to permit the integration of data from their departments into the RIC. The status of the integration is that most police departments in North Hampton County will be fully integrated by April. The Easton Police Department will be the first county department fully integrated with the RIC by the end of this month in February. In addition to local agencies, the RIC also works closely with the Officer David M. Petzold Digital Forensics Laboratory of Lehigh County in assisting law enforcement agencies with cellphone analysis. The lab extracts cellphone data from the devices and sends the information retrieved to the RIC where it is further analyzed. This process has been a critical part in investigations and is a major factor in helping to solve crimes. I reference a major homicide case in West Bethlehem at Scoobies where a partial license plate was read, tracked back to the registered owner of the vehicle, cellphone records were extracted, which resulted in the arrest of the suspect leading up to his conviction and eventual incarceration. I will just say that based on what was described during the presentation, the RIC and the Petzold Lab played a critical part in this investigation, and had these two services not been available, we may, we may have never found a suspect for not only this vicious crime, but for countless others. The RIC is involved with many investigations in Lehigh County, including every homicide. Requests for analytic services in two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen were for a litany of crimes ranging from homicide, narcotics, gang investigations, terrorism, and missing persons. During this two-year period, analysts spent upwards in the amount of forty-three-hundred hours on requests related to these types of crimes. Analysts also spent more than six-hundred-and-fifty hours on other requests such as locating material witnesses and informational requests by other law, local law enforcement agencies outside of the county, particularly here in North Hampton County. What is also noteworthy is that prior to the RIC and the Petzold Lab offering a synergy between the services, investigators would use highlighters and pens to cross-reference cellphone data, usage, web searches, all by hand. Imagine for one second going through a known drug dealer's cellphone records with a yellow highlighter and a big pen, which could take hours, if not days. Now take that same drug dealer with the same cellphone records and process it through a proprietary, computerized system that can process this data in a matter of minutes, resulting in a number of potential witnesses or additional actors who are part of the drug dealer network, possible gang affiliation, or even ties to another crime irrespective of the current investigation. Seeing firsthand what this center has done to help our local law enforcement agencies solve the most heinous and sometimes difficult crimes, I come before you on behalf of not only the city of Easton, but other municipalities in North Hampton County who would benefit from the RIC and its services. Hearing DA Martin explain how he financed the RIC through grants, donations from local philanthropic organizations, and proceeds from drug forfeitures, he sees the task of maintaining the RIC solely on the burden of Lehigh County residents increasingly difficult. I am asking you, North Hampton County Council, for an annual commitment from you, our representatives, in the amount of five-hundred-thousand dollars. Now, this would be an annual commitment, okay? The two thousand eighteen budget for the center is at one-point-one-million dollars, which is mostly personnel and professional technical services. The North Hampton County portion would cover approximately forty-five percent of the cost to operate the center on an annual basis. This money, if it came from you, would help keep the RIC operational and allow for our local police departments to use their services without ever worrying about the potential of being charged for seeking any assistance during a criminal investigation. I wish I were able to ask for a much smaller amount, but given the amount of money DA Martin has invested and the tremendous effort by all involved with the success of the RIC, I truly believe five-hundred-thousand dollars is worth the investment considering the amount of police departments in the county and the resources readily available to them in helping to keep our cities, boroughs, and township safe. I thank you for your time, and I'm glad to entertain any questions you may have regarding the RIC.
Thank you, Mr. Mulan.
Any questions?
I believe so. I think he should have come to a front of a finance committee or something with.
Right. I was just going to ask, how is it currently financed?
Lehigh County. Lehigh County funds the entire thing.
Oh, but it helps both counties, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, but at some point, though, like, uh, when we are at the, uh, Mr. McClure, if you want to, want to jump in, at some point, though, they can't sustain both counties. That's what are coming to us for some, some financial assistance.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Next person on the list signed up is Ms. Lynn Erickson.
Oh, she's here, okay, great.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, uh, administration, and thank you all the members of council for an opportunity to address you again this evening. As the returning members of council are well aware, I've been here many times and updated you on the Da Vinci Science City project, and we've sought support from North Hampton County for the project. We worked for over a year with the prior council and, um, reviewed with the prior council the benefits and the return on investment that the project will provide to the county and also to the residents. We also conducted, at county's request and recommendation, several meetings with residents to get their feedback and worked very closely with a lot of colleges and universities, local corporations, on the development of the master plan. In December, as you are also well aware, last year, county council passed an ordinance directing ten million of hotel tax funds to the project over a forty-year period. This commitment, combined with commitments made by the city of Easton and also commitments made by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, have provided the project with a foundation of public support that we believe will enable us to raise more funds from the private sector and from outside the Lehigh Valley to carry out our vision to build a world-class science center in North Hampton County. The master plan that was recently completed for Da Vinci Science City envisions a project that will deliver economic benefits on the scope and scale of the arena projects in Lehigh County built over the last decade. We believe that the project will be transformative for the county, serve as a major tourist destination at the eastern gateway to the Lehigh Valley, have a major economic impact, and create many new high-quality jobs within the county. Additionally, and perhaps most importantly, this project has a tremendous benefit for STEM education. It will be a major hub for STEM education and support the district of our, uh, support the curriculum of our school districts and also workforce development to, to help inspire and prepare future workers in the growing STEM, STEM economy. We also plan to showcase the scientific research being conducted in our colleges and universities and other research organizations and the advanced technologies in local businesses. This, Da Vinci Science City is a bold, uh, initiative and a complex undertaking. I hope that the new members of council, as I said at the last time I spoke before you, in particular, will take the opportunity to learn as much as possible about the project, the value it will deliver to North Hampton County, and the potential benefits it will offer to residents, schools, seniors, and vets in the county. With the county's current commitment of ten million over forty years, schoolchildren in North Hampton County will receive free admission on field trips to Da Vinci Science City, courtesy of the county, for forty years. Low-income North Hampton County residents will receive free admission privileges all year long, courtesy of the county, for those forty years. And North Hampton County veterans and seniors will receive free admission on select days throughout the year, also courtesy of the county over the period of funding. The value of these benefits far exceeds the county's commitment. We're designing this science center in partnership with the community to serve the community, and with the benefits that will be provided to county residents, this will truly be the community's science center. I fully appreciate and respect the desire of newly-elected county council to review the project and the financial commitment that the county has made. We welcome this effort, and we urge you to work with us to support this project with a financial commitment of a similar present-day value over a much shorter time period than forty years. I understand that we will have the opportunity to fully brief the Community and Economic Development Committee of Council on March one, and we look forward to doing so. In the meantime, I respectfully request that no action be taken regarding the existing county commitment, and that you allow us to first provide you with a comprehensive briefing on the project so that whatever actions you choose to take are done based on the most complete and up-to-date information. Excuse me, sorry. This project has been progressing at a rapid pace. We hope to meet our goal of having two-thirds of the funding for the project in place by this summer. I can tell you that that funding is going well, this, uh, in the private sector as well as the public sector.[1778.74] public sector. The site was recently acquired by the City of Eastern, and the demolition of the Days Inn Hotel, along with preliminary site work, will begin in the coming weeks. We are confident that the Science City project will move forward, and we hope that Northampton County will continue to serve as a major supporter of the effort. I look forward to briefing you more next month. I respectfully request that you reserve any action related to the county's support for the project until I have had the opportunity to fully update you. I hope that you will recognize the value of this project to the county and its residents, and choose to support it at a funding level with a present-day value equivalent to the amount currently in place. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you again, Ms. Erickson. Next person having the list is Cassie Hilger. Do you want to come up and get your flash drive or anything? You're fine, you signed in twice, huh?
You're like, "I did it," it's okay.
You don't want to revisit the mic? Okay. The next person I have here is, and I'm sorry, it's Ali. Same thing? You're just like piling on the menu here, okay? And how about Linda, Linda?
Linda Hindo.
Hindo?
Hindo.
You're not with them?
I would love to be one. She knows what she's doing. She knew what that was.
Thanks.
I'll ask your indulgence to let me wear two hats for just a couple seconds. I think you were all thanked, at least in the fall, for supporting the Northampton County Historical and Genealogical Society's production of the Northampton County history, and there's new people on the board. I just wanted you, on the board, to know you are deserving of a free copy of this history, so please let the people at the Siegel Museum know if you haven't picked it up, or even tell me, I'll see that you get it. I was the coordinator for the thing, so I was down in the trenches, and I know how important your support was. You can't know. So, thank you, thank you very much for supporting. It was at least six or seven years of all our lives, and you did a wonderful job, so thank you. Now, different hat. I'm here to talk about the PennEast Pipeline because you have as the last page of your bundle of information, something that's going to come up, and my comments are relevant to that page if you get to it tonight. I want you to walk in our shoes, the shoes of those of us who are opposing this PennEast Pipeline, because unless you do, you can't understand why we go through so very much to oppose it, why we won't sign agreements with PennEast. Think of your own property. Imagine a ditch seven feet deep. Who in this room is six feet tall? Guy back there. All right, add another foot to him. That's how deep the ditch is. It is 50 feet wide plus another 50 feet for construction, and that's what tears through your property if you get involved in this. If you sign an agreement with PennEast, that part of your property forever belongs to someone else, that entity, PennEast or whoever they sell it to, because they can sell it to anybody in perpetuity, for any purpose, not just gas, could be crude oil, could be sewage, could be anything. You have no rights to it ever again. Now, imagine that you must sell your property, you're moving, your heirs need to sell this property. You must tell the buyer all this stuff, that the pipeline is 36 inches in diameter and carries very high-pressure methane or possibly any of those other substances. The buyer must try to get a mortgage, and you know what? Mortgage companies aren't really overly anxious to put a mortgage on a property like this, and people who already are holding a mortgage on the land that's being invaded are in danger of losing that. They have to pay high liability insurance, and you have to pay the real estate taxes on it, just like the rest of your property, but you don't own it. How likely is that buyer to want your property as opposed to somebody else's property unencumbered by all these dangers and encumbrances? Basic to the whole premise of the existing, existence of the pipeline is public need, public need. The U.S. Constitution's Fifth Amendment declares that there should be a public need for any seizure of your land. The Natural Gas Act says the benefits should outweigh the harms. At issue is if an entity like PennEast is not a public utility, and it isn't, but rather a private corporation, which it is, and it bases its evidence for public need on its sales to its own affiliates, because there are six affiliates in this group, 75% of the market is going to its affiliates. Is this truly proof of public need or a fleecing of private citizens for the owners and the shareholders? FERC, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, gives unfair exercise of eminent domain to a private corporation intending to make a profit. New Jersey's DEP is holding PennEast to requirements. Pennsylvania's DEP all too quickly caved in to industry's pressure. FERC Commissioner Richard Glick, in a dissenting opinion on the FERC decision to give a conditional certificate, it is not a permanent certificate yet.
Ma'am, can you, we have five minutes for public speaking, can you get to the end of it, because, you know, we can...
Oh, I thought they had more, so...
No, they had a presentation.
I see, all right. Well, he pointed to PennEast's failure to identify a proper market. I was just going to use my own example, because I'm one of 500 people impacted by this exam. We have 32 acres this pipeline is going to go through. It's all forested with a little wetland. It's going to put that big pipeline through forests, killing tons of trees and creating all this destruction. They're going to create erosion, runoff. It's going through the largest granite outcropping in Northampton County, and it will have to blast its way through this granite. We don't know the dangers there, except that it could destroy many people's pipelines. So, I can only give you a superficial description in five minutes for an extremely complex situation, but what you want, what we want you to know is that we private citizens are in a very scary situation, but the county itself has risks, and I think probably that will be addressed in this resolution that will come before you.
Thank you. So, anyone that's signed, that's the only people that's signed up, is there anybody else for the courtesy of the floor? Seeing no one, we'll move up to the County Executive's Report. Mr. McClellan?
Thank you, just hopefully, very briefly, Mr. President, I have some news about the Melitas Building and concomitantly voter registration and what we'll do about it in the future. An anonymous report was made to the City of Eastern about the potentiality of mold being in the Melitas Building, which caused Eastern code enforcement, very appropriately, to, I'm very glad to invite them in and check our buildings out. I think what we found was that there was no mold in the building, so that was very good. I'm glad that they were there, and I'm glad that they checked that out for us. So, no mold, good news. There's long been rumored mold there, and it's been at least encapsulated, if not entirely remediated. So, that's good news. Bad news is during the inspection, and if you want a longer and more thorough explanation of what was found, Mr. Dirtinger was there, and just that parenthetically, we're so lucky that we have an electrician who's also our Director of Administration, because it was electrical problems code that were violative or potentially violative of Eastern's codes. And the, the end of the story is that we're going to need to come to you in the very near future to get the electrical fixed on a emergency basis. Eastern, I must thank the City of Eastern, Mayor Pantone, Mr. Campos, the code enforcement folks, they understand that we're running our elections out there, that we have one coming up in May, and they're working with us, and I can't tell you how much we appreciate them working with us, because they know we're going to go get it fixed. Fortunately, with Mr. Dirtinger's, we're just, I didn't know I'd need him for this, but with his, his expertise and his, his quick thinking and his plan, he's going to get wind, he got Wind Gap Electric in there. We don't have the estimate yet as what it's going to take to bring it up to code, but we'll, as soon as we have it, we'll bring it back to you. Which brings me to mid-to-long-term issues of Melitas. We, we have to move on past the Melitas Building. How that's going to, how it's going to manifest over time, we'll come up with a plan, we'll bring it to you. I'm thinking we'll have something to you by the end of the year, but our difficulty with that, I mean, in my mind, I'm already prepared to come to you to bulldoze the place, but we don't have, at this time, a good place to put voters. We just don't have any space in the county right now, which, which we've identified that we can readily put voters. So, we're going to have to keep it up to code until we can find some place to, to house voters. So, that's that. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I just, I just remembered, I do believe we did budget specifically for that building. Can the repairs be taken out of that line item?
I will check. So, Mr. Barron will look tomorrow and see if that is in fact the case. Okay. Have we looked at it?
There may be something in the capital budget.
Oh, that's right, we talked about that. We'll, we'll figure that out, and if that's the case, that's where it'll come from. Okay.
Mr. Dirt, you charge us five dollars?
He, you know what, he is, he is not. I think you were getting that extra step thing? Yeah, I think, I think that's, I think that, I think we bought that New York electrical experience.
Yeah, really.
So, I didn't, I didn't intend to go there, but you led me into it. So, another long-to-midterm problem, which I think is, is known well to some of you, maybe not as well to others, we have a, we have, we have staffing shortage at Greysdale, which did not occur overnight. It's not in one department and cannot be fixed easily. The, the fixes are actually quite complicated, will require all the stakeholders to come together to, to fix the problem. But one of the things that I will be bringing to you in the very near future, as many of you may know, we had an LPN to RN reimbursement program in the past in Northampton County. We are down to 25 RNs in a skilled nursing facility of where we're taking care of over 600 people. This, this ratio is too, is too great, and we must address this. Now, the, the LPN to RN tuition, support, and reimbursement program is not an immediate fix. It'll take two years before we start seeing the, we'll start seeing the, the benefit of that, but it's one thing we can do in relatively short order to start addressing this particular problem. So, that, that's all I have on that. With respect to Mr. Milan's presentation, his brief presentation on the RIC, there, it's a very complicated, very complicated issue, which we will need to deal with potentially through our budgetary process. A half a million dollars is a lot of money for something that is not a core county function. So, I'll be meeting with the chiefs to see what it is the potential municipality contributions will be to this, and one of the potential ideas would be for the county to match whatever the particular municipality would put into the program. But when, when I'm talking to you about having to hire nurses, you know, that 500, you know, every dollar makes it more difficult for me to hire a nurse. Every dollar makes this more difficult for us to preserve a farm, and so although this is a, it's, it's a tremendous, by the way, it's a tremendous facility, and I commend you all to go look at it, but at the end of the day, it'll be about dollars and cents and whether we can actually afford that kind of commitment. I, I can tell you that I'm not, that, that number is large, that half a million dollar a year number, and another thing you need to understand about RIC and the Petzl Center is, and again, both tremendous assets, the law enforcement, there's no question about that. DA Martin in Lehigh County, he was really, his, he's a visionary in this regard and should be commended, but the, the Petzl Center's at the sales, and District Attorney Morgan Elliott already budgets $42,500 a year in his budget, and I believe he uses forfeiture funds, I believe, don't hold me to that part of it, I'll get in trouble talking about his forfeiture funds, but I believe he sends $42,500 to the Petzl Center already, because our law enforcement does heavily rely upon what they do at the Petzl Center, which is criminals apparently text a lot, and so, so, so they're making cases every day, but, so at the Petzl Center, they have the technology and the analysts to download the phones and get the evidence, and then they have the analysts who can come to court to testify. So, that, so what they're doing at the Petzl Center and what they're doing at the RIC are different. DA Morgan Elliott already participates in the Petzl Center, and my understanding is he's going to continue to, because it's a great tool for law enforcement. So, that, the $500,000 would also be in addition to what he's already doing at the Petzl Center, so we'll need to, you know, we'll need to look at that pretty carefully as we go through the budgetary process to see if we could find any money, let alone a half a million dollars for it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. McClellan?
I have two questions for you, Mr. Executive. Greysdale, are we, as far as the nursing go, shortage goes, are we still vendoring with the private firm for...
No, we're, currently, we have a per diem nurse program.
Okay.
Which, from my, my initial foray into trying to understand this problem...
It's complicated.
It, it, well, it is, and apparently the per diem program isn't working out for us as well as we had hoped it would.
All right, that's what I was curious about. The other thing is with the Melitas Building, just the, you just talked about an urgent need, which I get, I mean, you have to do what you have to do, but then you're also looking at a long-range plan, because not just the building, but we've heard about the parking lot and the issues. I assume you're going to be looking at this as, as an entire package across the street, or maybe not. The idea was that the parking lot, there were problems with it, that may not be usable in the future. I don't know if that's accurate or not.
When we come to you with a plan for what we'll do with that spot of ground...
Yeah.
We'll have an analysis, there's been a couple analyses, analyses over time...
Yeah.
On the instability at the back of that property. I mean, I think we all know that there's, there's instability, and they're, they're currently shoring it up, so we'll have a, whatever plan we come up with, we'll understand what the challenges are with the subsidence in the back.
I, I do appreciate...
But, but no, we can no longer ignore the problem.
Right, and, and I mean, I think where you're coming from with this, I appreciate, you know, I've long been pretty vociferous about the county being in the real estate business and owning many buildings. My hope for Eastern at one time was a non-court-related government center like Lehigh County has down in downtown Eastern with 200-plus people every day buying lunches and whatnot, but I think that's probably after, I'm going to my reward. But the thing is, when you're doing this, I mean, are you, and I assume you are, you're going to be looking, if they can't be there in the long term, as Melitas is probably going to go away, how we're going to incorporate this possibly into an overall master plan as far as county buildings go, so we don't end up having more buildings here, there, and everywhere.
I, well, I hope it, it'll be part of a plan, but look, where we have properties and buildings and leases and where we own and where we don't, it's more of a mosaic than a, it, it is, and, and I don't know that we'll ever have the whole picture, but we'll try and have a suggest, we have to deal with Melitas, and, and we have to deal with voters, and that's...
I think in conversations we've had, you understand my concerns, and that's enough. I just wanted to, thank you.
In the short-term, Melitas, voters, those are, I, those are the problems in front of me.
That's it? Wari, you got a question?
Yeah, I think it's a two-parter. As far as this RIC program in Lehigh County, you went to the same presentation.
I did, it was excellent.
And so, when Lehigh County initiated, were there any ways to do startup funding from any other entities outside the county or outside the sending communities? Are there any other kind of law enforcement grants or state pass-through monies or anything like that that are available?
You know, DA Martin and his staff, I mean, they're brilliant, they really are in this, with respect to this, the technology that they're bringing to this, and their, their efforts in pursuing grants, they've, they've gotten Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency Grants, so yes, they have pursued other outside money, and, and during the, just parenthetically, during the presentation, they, they were telling me about all the state officials who had been through, the Attorney General, all these folks have been through there, and I said, "Well, what'd the state say when you ask them for money?" No money from the state, so, that's, it's falling, it's, supporting this in the near term is going to be a local endeavor.
And then the other question I had, which again could probably be handled another time, but just a thought, because you mentioned the RN issue, any potential to do recruitment with current, like nursing students that are in classes? Because I know if you offer it to people originating in the program, it does take two years, but is there any way to link with St. Luke's or anybody else to do it short-term?
We already do. This was a, a question I just asked not too long ago, we have students there, and part of the reason we have students there is to allow them to experience what working in a skilled nursing facility is all about, and we do do, my understanding is, we do do soft recruitment. We have a problem... We have a problem in recruiting young folks coming out of school, and it's a multifaceted problem, and it's not gonna be an easy one to solve.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else for Mr. McCrory?
I just have one other thing. I don't have a dog in the fight, because I don't have a vote. And I understand it's in the form of a resolution, so I won't have to do anything about it. But, Ms. Zirinsky's resolution, if I were sitting somewhere up there, I'd vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next thing we have on the agenda is old business. Does anybody have any old business? Okay, I'd like to bring something up. I had a meeting the other week with the senior judge, and, I mean, Mr. Kuzick, you might remember when we passed the money for the teleosoft.
Yes.
And that was stalled by the last administration for some reason. And with Mr. McCrory's help, we've started that up again, and we hope to be doing e-filing in the very short future, finally. So, it was stalled. It should have been online by August already.
That was over a year ago.
It's been December 12... Of December of 2016, we passed it. I didn't even know if you were here. I thought you weren't on council yet, but it happened. You know, I thought you were in your hiatus for two years. I thought it was further. So, I just wanted to let everybody know that that is happening, and it's finally happening. So, I mean, you spent a lot of money on it. Any other old business? All right. The next thing is another new business. It's the introduction of an ordinance repealing the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of North Hampton County Council pursuant to the Hotel Room Rental Tax Act of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, 16PS-1770, and the Tourist Promotion Law of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and Ordinance Number 359 of 200440 of 2005, Determining that the DaVinci Science Center, a not-for-profit corporation within North Hampton County engaged in tourism-related activities that benefit North Hampton County, and therefore directing a portion of the North Hampton County annual allocation of 12.5% of the revenue generated by the Hotel Room Rental Tax Act of North Hampton County, Ordinance 359 of 200440 of 2005, to be distributed to the DaVinci Science Center for the DaVinci Science City Project located in Easton, Pennsylvania in accordance with this ordinance." We're gonna have a discussion. I need someone to introduce this ordinance. Mr. Dietz, I need a second sponsor.
I'll second.
Mr. Kuzick. Okay, there'll be a public hearing, possible debate, possible vote will be held on... At the February 15, 2018 meeting.
Just one quick point. I have asked our finance director, based on Mrs. Ferraro's questions at the committee meeting, there are two separate issues before us that will take place. One is this ordinance, and then, the other is the budget. And I think it was referenced in the committee meeting as well. All this... Repealing this ordinance would repeal the 40-year commitment. It would not, per se, repeal the $250,000 that is in the budget. That would be a separate budget amendment that would be required at another time.
Okay. We will get direction on that from...
Mr. Barron, I believe, is gonna look into it and give us some clarification.
Okay, we'll have that for... So, the 250 will be sitting there, like Peg was worried about. Sure.
Once you do what you do, we'll then have an answer.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, second thing in the agenda is introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance by North Hampton County Council pursuant to the City of Bethlehem Lower Salkin Township, Salkin Valley School District, and the Bethlehem Area School District, and Providing for Property Tax Exempt for Certain Deteriorated Properties as defined in Ordinance 2017-23 of the City of Bethlehem pursuant to Act 76 of 1977 of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, as amended 72 Pennsylvania State 4722 and Act 42 of 1977 of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, as amended and agreeing with the amendment in Article 342 of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Bethlehem entitled Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Enterprise Development Area." I need someone to introduce this. Mr. Werner, second... Thank you, Mr.... You wanted to do it? Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Go ahead, Larry.
My day will fall.
All right. There's gonna be a public hearing, debate, possible vote will be held at the February 15, 2018 meeting. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is the consideration of a resolution supporting the 2018 priorities of the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania. And I ask Mr. Kuzick to introduce the resolution.
Okay. So, whereas Pennsylvania counties have selected seven priority issues for 2018, that will be the focal point of North Hampton County. And whereas these priorities showcase the services that counties provide and emphasize the critical need to redefine, reinvigorate, and emphasize the state-county partnership and service delivery. And whereas counties are acting to improve their communities and the well-being of their residents through these priorities, whereas the top priority for the Pennsylvania counties in 2018 is human services system reform and funding, highlighting the need for additional funding to address increased mandates, service needs, and caseload. Whereas North Hampton County has experienced a 91% increase in referrals to its Child Welfare Agency following nearly 30 new child welfare laws enacted in 2015. And whereas counties also seek to improve coordination and streamline administration to better reflect the county-state partnership. And whereas counties will continue to provide... To address the opioid epidemic through their priority to prevent drug overdoses and substance abuse. And whereas in 2015, there were 72 opioid-related deaths; in 2016, 81 opioid-related deaths; and as of November 2017, 101 opioid-related deaths. Whereas counties will build on the progress that has been made to emphasize the need for integrating planning among state and local stakeholders and increase capacity for prevention, treatment, and intervention programs. And whereas the third county priority for 2018 is to maintain the shale gas impact fee as currently structured in Act 13 of 2012, regardless of any potential discussion, to place a severance tax on the natural gas industry for other purposes. And whereas, North Hampton County receives funding for environmental and open space projects through the Marcellus Legacy Fund and uses those funds for land acquisition and restoration for open space, parks, and trails. And whereas the fourth county priority is to increase psychiatric or forensic bed access in state hospitals for county inmates who have mental illness and developmental disabilities, as there are 250 inmates across the state, including an inmate in North Hampton County waiting for just 237 available beds. And whereas efforts are also needed to expand treatment and restoration services with the prison and community system, with the care of the individual and that foremost priority. And whereas counties also support veteran services, funding for voting systems, and mandate reforms as priorities for 2018. Now, therefore, be it resolved that North Hampton County stands ready to work with the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania and counties throughout the Commonwealth in support of these priorities in 2018. Be it further resolved, North Hampton County calls upon the General Assembly and the administration to reengage in dialogue on the appropriate levels of partnership between the state and counties by reexamining and, where necessary, reconfiguring the state-county financial and regulatory relationship. Be it further resolved, collaboration between county government and the Commonwealth on these priorities will lead to solutions that better reflect the needs of Pennsylvanians, improved stewardship of taxpayer dollars, reduce cost, increase local flexibility, and answer the quality of services counties provide. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the North Hampton County Legislative Delegation, to Governor Tom Wolf, and to the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania. And several counties have gone about passing resolutions supporting these priorities, so I ask for your support as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzick. Has opened up to any discussion? Any discussion from...
Just one thing. Mr. Kuzick's resolution on support, obviously. There is no way, and we all heard from Mr. Dolan about the issues in children and youth, without the state's intervention in changing the fundamental system of how civil service operates and how it's set up and paid, we'll never solve the problem here locally. Really, no county is gonna be able to do that. We do need action at the state level. Hopefully, C. Captain can push this through. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just may add to that. The Auditor General, which you've been in touch with people with the opioid programs also. We've been approached at the state level. I believe Tara and Mr. Kraft were approached also. And the Auditor General, De Pasquale, is already actively pursuing those areas that were discussed by Mr. Dolan. It's a matter of how far he gets and how much support he gets. So, yes, at the state level, it is being looked at. It has become a program. Wolf is behind De Pasquale now, so the question is, how much more push can we give them?
Thank you. Any other... Call for the vote, Ms. Ambo.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Lost her.
Peg?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hepner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
And Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is consideration of the codification resolution for the period ending December 31, 2017. I'll ask Mr. Heckman to read.
All right. My eyeglasses broke. So, I didn't need them before I started my hiatus 20 years ago. I think I'll be okay if I just... North Hampton County Charter Section 606(c) requires the North Hampton County Council to provide by resolution a codification of all ordinances as amended, having the force and effect of law and of the charter as amended. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the North Hampton County Council that the attached codification for the period ending December 31, 2017 shall be adopted this first day of February 2018. And if you look through the rather lengthy attachment.
Don't you want to read the whole thing, Ron?
No.
Okay. Any discussion on the codification?
Respectfully, no.
See, none? Call for the vote?
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hepner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay, thank you. Next thing on the agenda is the consideration of a resolution requesting legislators to reevaluate legal framework for oil and gas pipelines. And I'll ask Mrs. Zirinsky to introduce the resolution.
Thank you. Whereas state and federal legislatures and their elected members must invest the time and due diligence to reevaluate current policy, regulations, and the legal framework for the siting and construction of oil and gas pipelines, and whereas, local municipal governments are impacted, burdened, and under-resourced to effectively plan and prepare for the health, safety, and welfare of their citizens when oil and gas pipelines are constructed in their communities. And whereas, local municipal governments are impacted and burdened as host municipalities when oil and gas pipelines are located within their jurisdictional boundaries without any authority to participate in the siting process. And whereas, the historical legal framework for locating oil and gas pipelines is outdated in its failure to recognize and address changes in land use, development activity, and population density. And whereas, the North Hampton County Council supports Thomas Jefferson's position that the government closest to the people serves the people best. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the North Hampton County Council does hereby concur that it is incumbent upon this Commonwealth to, one, develop a policy for determining the location of oil and gas pipelines for the common good of all the citizens of the Commonwealth; two, reevaluate the legal framework for the siting of oil and gas pipelines to allow for an active role by local governments, including the authority, to directly participate and responsibly influence the siting process; three, reevaluate the legal framework for oil and gas pipelines to establish easement-saturation standards that recognize the practical limitations for the number of pipelines, size of pipelines, and character of the products transmitted within a given pipeline easement; four, reevaluate the legal framework for oil and gas pipelines to provide funding resources to local governments that host oil and gas pipelines, to enable local governments to effectively review, inspect, and monitor these industrial highways to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of their residents; and five, establish a Pennsylvania agency tasked with the authority for the siting with municipal input and regulation of oil and gas pipelines, both during construction and when in service, in order to minimize adverse impact on the citizens, or, in the alternative, restructure the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission to provide adequate and effective funding resources and legislative tools to perform this function.
Thank you, Ms. Zirinsky. Is there any discussion on this?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yeah, I can... I look to support this resolution, but I do have a concern for worker safety and also for responsible contractors, to make sure that any work performed on pipelines, whether they're in or putting them in, if we're gonna go to the length of sending this off to the government. So, I'll be introducing an amendment to this resolution next council meeting.
You can introduce it now.
Well, I don't have it prepared. I got this at 9:00 last night.
No, we can pass the resolution as is, right?
Yes, Mr. Solicitor. This is a resolution, and the organic law of the Home Rule Charter permits any council person to introduce a resolution at the meeting. There is no requirement to either table it or to pass it. It's the will of council in that regard. You may consider it and pass it if it has five votes, or it may fail. That depends on, obviously, the motion, second, and vote.
But, you can also amend it at another meeting, even though you passed this one.
The question is, is there a necessity, when there's an anticipated amendment, that it must be tabled? The answer is no.
Okay. Seeing that there is no... Is there any other discussion?
I'd like to ask Ms. Zirinsky a question. I support the resolution. So, I don't... From what I'm hearing, I don't have a problem with that. Are you comfortable without going through all the processes of us voting on this at the next meeting, or do you want to vote on it tonight?
My preference would be that we vote on it tonight.
Firstly, I think there are two different issues with it. I mean, I think if you have that, maybe just a separate resolution for that. But, I really think they're actually two different issues about the same, you know, topic, but really, two different issues with it, so...
Anyone else care to... Seeing there is no amendment, we'll call for the vote, Ms. Ambo.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hepner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
And Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda is any other new business to discuss? Anybody else have anything that we haven't brought up? All right. Now, I'm gonna ask... We have to go into an executive session for a discussion of possible litigation, so you want to mark the time at... What time are we going to execute? 19:38? I'm sorry, 7:38 PM. I need a motion to go into executive session? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
I so do.
If I may?
You may.
Because we're all finding our own level here. Executive session is by will of council, and there are specific statutory requirements that allow you to go into executive session. Litigation is one of them. If you desire to go into an executive session, there is no bar in that regard, but you need to announce it both before you go into executive session, and you need to announce it when you come back.
And that's what we just...
And it must be limited to that discussion.
Okay. Okay. Do you, do you want to announce it, or I just announced it? And we had a motion and a second, so here we go. We'll be back. Stay tuned.
I'm sorry. Jeez.
I, I, I got it.
We're leaving. Hey, you can't come with us.
I know, we're gonna have to take the phone with us.
Good.
There's a nice here, bigger than some of the other ones.
There's more.
There's more, yeah.
More, too many.
More, yeah.
I am eating tomorrow. Two people, good.
He was all right.
There were big...
I need more.
There were very few things.
I'm happy to go ahead.
We're a little more, though, just now, just like, to get your boy line here.
I got that.
I've been thinking.
P three, you know, the P three thing, you know, I, I'd be willing to wait and see how it works. You know, if it works, if it works out well, then, okay, fine. But, you know, is it, is it, is it the nightmare that Ken crafts as it is, or is it something, you know, more reasonable? I don't know.
So, that's really something. What you decided, you hear something, and then you come on, first time, manage it, it's good. So, you end up looking at one of the...
You know, Canada hasn't had start on, uh, so does Europe.
See, I have a good experience.
The experience of Canada has been good.
Good, good. As R P three is not traditional.
And so, with, with, some of the traditional ones, with, uh, I think, I, with, I have a part, actually, a part of the top of the road and things like that, disastrous. You know, it feels like I was... Yeah.
And, yeah, that is, that is true. I mean, the true, true path is going to be a path that you're trying to find. And if you start getting... But the problem is, is the way you would count it, is the, it's called concession agreement. That's what it's usually, it has, it's not. So now, since there's a transfer of property, you can go over the first, you can go over all those things. So now since there's a transfer of property, you need to, for the first, you need to look at all those things. It's like, it's like, it's like, yeah.
Because you, you, I, mostly all of the giant growth, the path to growth, the, the, the creation of all that. But here it's, it's, this is, what's really weird about marketing, Ted, is so many penny related projects. And in some ways, that presents a longer challenge because, like, not all people are exactly, it means they're accomplishing, uh, but, uh, the crease or that.
I know.
Pretty good or well cut.
Supposedly. Now, obviously, it's still large, which is not. Yeah. I never liked three or four, three or four. Three, I'm not sure. No, I had this solution, higher on.
I will propose a lot. But, but I've, I think he should be in charge of collecting money from the charities. The, uh, the cost of funds. You know, the charge, he, he started out as a repo. Oh, yeah. He used to, he used to do some crazy shit and.
Pretty, pretty specifically, the court state, court administration. Court services. I tried to, I, I tried, I, I tried to follow up the express.
You did a article for the express five weeks ago. But, yeah, I, I read the last night.
I tried to follow up on that.
Can I get a little?
I tried to follow up on that, with, uh, with the balance tag. Was it getting cooperation down, down, just over? I don't know if that system is changing, difficult for the traffic, you know, because. Arch, arches were, I think after all, pretty subtractive that number, or.
Well, if you go on the county web, or the state website, it tell, at least from two thousand seven to two thousand sixteen. Will tell you how much money was imposed, and will tell you how much money was collected, and how much money is still open. So it'll tell you how much, and not only that, but it'll tell you year by year, like, you know, so you can, you can add it up every year.
And, um, that showed me what for air, how to, how to, how to restitution.
Yes, breaks it down, breaks it down.
What is that?
Uh, PA Course US, okay? And if you, if, you know, if you look at it, it tells you, for example, in two thousand seven, all the fines, costs, and restitution that were imposed in two thousand seven. Believe it or not, the collection rate is seventy percent. Everything, again, it's pretty good, it's a pretty good rate. Seventy percent of them was collected. Yeah. Then, then, if we look at it. As of today, two thousand seven up to today, they collected seventy percent of money, which is pretty good, when you come right down to it. But then, as you go on.
Doesn't feel that way, yeah.
Yeah, as you go on, the, the collection rate drops because, because people don't have the financial means to pay, they're under payment programs. You know what I mean, you know, but.
You don't have to, like, like, there's still, some of you are still turning off those debts. So, I, I'm curious, like, what, so if, if that occurred in two thousand seven, I think you can't leave an article, there's, um, a woman who traveled.
Yeah, you did, you did.
And she, that's not a problem. She was waiting for payments. Though I think that there is going to be a go back to the issue of sentence that goes.
Right.
So, I, two thousand seven is seventy percent rate because the payment is paid off.
Plus there's a, you know, there's a recent case law, I think. Something about restitution.
Government is involved in restitution.
Government's not involved in restitution.
That is.
With the travel agent.
I don't know, I don't know. Since I looked at, there are four or five. A few other parts probably. I don't know, some projects like, like, the general, uh, the, the.
I, I, first of all, I'm watching here, up.
I can't, I can't, I can't.
So, I, I usually can't, but I hear that we're kind of, we're here in terms of. You know, people who do knowledge really. If, um, if.
I checked them out, I haven't found anything really bad about it yet.
We think it's, but, I don't know, it just seems that some of the promises are very, like, like that.
Some things sound stupid, but true.
Yeah, well, yeah, but the, uh, like that, uh, rescue, right, they're also, R A S Q, you know, whatever, there's radio.
What is rescue? What's that supposed to be?
Like a hard hack. They, they, that's the case, it's a show. Stop that.
What's the, uh? Pretty good, right?
Uh-huh.
You know, you said, you asked that. I thought you died.
Like that stuff is, you're able, I know that, three before, screwed. Thirty, I'm big thirty.
I, 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 I. But, uh, but, yeah, these mice, I, I bought.
Sister, take it off.
I take it.
Yeah, take a couple.
She's, well, she's, I, I, I don't like, I, I buy medicine, I, I have food, you know.
I did go to the doctor.
I don't, oh, I've seen a doctor.
So, it's, uh, one of yours, they shot, one of them, they shot, you know, one of them.
Doctor, it's, um, tetanus, it's off, uh.
One, right? He's not the idiot to say that. I know. And you work for a company, I said, yeah, I know. And then she starts, and then she starts.
You know, really, the ordinance, the ordinance that gave you ten million dollars was actually a violation of sunshine. Because they had their public meeting, they had their public hearing.
The, the.
After the public hearing, she proposed a, an amendment.
Didn't you hear that they're conceding on?
Ten, a factor of ten, yeah. Yeah, I think the public, uh, uh, should have been given an effect, she, she purposely didn't say what the amendment was. She kept, she kept it under wraps, I mean, everybody knew that, that she was gonna ask for a lot more money. But we didn't know what it was, and then when she proposed the amendment, it was ten million dollars. I can't believe these guys asked me. I can't, I still can't get over that.
I don't want to hear it, but, maybe more than that.
Yeah.
I, I get, and, and, which, or, or.
Yeah. Oh, I get, I get where he's coming from, but. This, this is actually, like, um, he's, he's got support from the community, but, you know, it's a project that's gonna be realistic. What I do is, if, 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 if I program, Commonwealth Finance Authority, that you became awards, you know, not gonna be playing out any more money. So they gave the Commonwealth Finance Authority, has it, say, the state decide.
Where exactly? Mark.
Uh, Commonwealth Finance Authority went for a split.
Ask for, ask, yeah, ask for.
The pauses, why it was bad. Oh, my God.
I, I, I've run it all over since you can.
He's actually, he's in the bathroom.
Yeah, the book was, yeah, it was, you, back, or, or parent, she, they're talking about wires and stuff.
He's called that. He doesn't seem to stop. Messiah.
Messiah. I know, but it's, I, there we have it. Good, and they, they're gonna tell you about, they, you kind of love stories, but they don't necessarily, I think. They're, they're, they're all over the world.
Talk about this.
That's a, that's a.
First, starting with a case law or a brief. Yeah, she looks at that. Oh, God.
Sure. But it's, it's.
No.
It, it, it was true. It was true. And at that time, I was calling, I was calling, it's like, that time. And he wasn't answering, and that was very unusual for him, okay? Very unusual for him. Yeah, he, cause he didn't answer, not a call, okay? Then he blew the answer, and then, then all of a sudden, the number was just dead. Okay, and that was after, right? Yeah.
Well, we have to, that's really, that's, uh, it's true.
There are, there are, there are processes, there are, um, ordinance, that was.
True, but, that is, it's true.
That was, that was, yes. Some of it's, I mean, for, for, you know, it's, 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 it's.
This, this money, I don't know, this money was coming up to, 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 to operations. Those companies that are there.
This, this money wasn't, um, yeah, in ordinance, it was, it was for the project, sensitive project, there were no, um, specific directives given.
My understanding, and, and, I'm looking at the, I mean, I'll, I'll ask them, but, but first, but.
Well, there's a question, there's a question, my, my.
Except for facilities.
He, they have an obligation to disclose that. Yeah. They may not be introduced in part of their direct, but they have an obligation to disclose that something. He puts the logic on his head.
Marketing, marketing facilities, yeah, which has, um.
Had all this information, he didn't disclose it.
The, the marketing aspect is, they, they couldn't.
It might, your change, it's.
That is the truth. I would think, I, 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 I. And, 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 so, 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 so.
So, they give them, they have an obligation to disclose.
My beautiful.
So he's aware, he's aware of whatever they have.
Some of the other projects that, that is correctly, um, they weren't all necessarily capital, they were better than tourism, I mean, they, they, it's better than tourism.
It was, right.
And, um.
Under, under scrutiny, that.
So, what he, to, 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 but I, sure, we go back, it's, 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 it's necessary.
No, you.
Spending, well, in both parts, all of them aren't necessarily.
The, the, the ones that, the ones that are available strictly through this project, well, that, that.
Yeah, and then, I would have to look at that.
There, there, there are other projects that can be, but, but this, the money, I think that they have the right, is strictly for, for, for.
That's the new one, but I'm not sure that that, that it's not, because the other one, the other one, the way it's.
But, but, well, I, 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 I remember the breakdown, uh, I, I, this money's coming from.
Yeah, I guess I'm responding to, to the lines in the other pool.
Yes.
Even though it says marketing, they aren't all really, what's the, you are marketing?
No, that's, no.
So I don't know how the interpretation of what the guidelines behind any of the fund.
The way it's been explained on, like, previous administrations, uh, with, with, like, those other funds who are, who are.
But I don't know the legally they do, that's, I don't know legally they do, and then they.